Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 24th, special meeting of the Olympia City Council. This is a study session to receive a Martin Way Corridor Study Briefing. And we have all of council present with Mayor Cheryl Selby excused. I guess we should see if somebody wants to approve the agenda, add to the agenda, modify the agenda, comment on the agenda.
I'd like to motion to approve it.
Second.
All right, it's been made and seconded to approve tonight's agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, we have an agenda. And that brings us to our one item of business tonight, the Martin Way Corridor Study Briefing. And I don't know, Sophie, are you going to kick it off?
Yeah, I'll introduce it.
Sophie Stimson, our interim transportation director.
All right, well, good evening. Thanks for having this topic on a work session agenda. It's nearly complete culmination of a lot of work by Thurston Regional Planning Council and the City of Olympia, City of Lacey, and Inter-City Transit Thurston County. I'm Sophie Stimson. I'm the interim transportation director in Public Works. And would it be okay if I just introduced everyone? Or would you, okay. Joyce Phillips is here from Community Planning and Development. She's the principal planner. Allison Osterberg is here from Thurston Regional Planning Council. Allison's a senior planner there. Also at the table is Mark Russell, the interim Public Works Director. And I also know that Leonard Bauer is here, Director of Community Planning and Development. And this is an exciting project because it's where transportation and land use intersect. So that's why we're all up here. This is a briefing on the Martin Way Corridor Study. This is an important corridor in our region. It spans from Olympia through Lacey into Thurston County. And it's a key transit corridor for a region. We've been working together under the leadership of Thurston Regional Planning Council for a couple of years now. Thanks to Allison, who's done a great job leading the project. We're learning a lot more about the Martin Way Corridor. And we're developing an action plan for how we can realize our urban corridor vision for this important regional corridor. This project typifies a kind of work we'd like to do more of. It really brings together land use and transportation. It's helping us realize, as I said, our urban corridor vision, which has been articulated in our comprehensive plan. And through better coordinated work with land use and transportation, bringing about land use changes and transportation improvements, we can realize this comp plan vision. And when I say what does coordinated land use and transportation, it's just to give you an image of what we're talking about. Just as we can all picture the need for sidewalks on Martin Way, we also need places for people to walk on Martin Way. Just as we have invested heavily in the transit service on Martin Way, we need to do more to help people live and work on that corridor and take advantage of that transit service. So that's just a taste of what we're going to hear more about tonight. I'll turn it over to Allison to run through the presentation. Thanks.
Thanks so much for the intro, Sophie. And good evening, council. Allison Osterberg with Thurston Regional Planning Council. And I'm really excited to get to have a good chunk of time to talk with you about the Martin Way Corridor Study. It's been a really great project. I'll give a little bit of background. I know there's some on the council are pretty familiar and been following this project all the way through. And for some, it will be new. And so just come along, come along on the tour with us. Let's take a little tour through Martin Way in the past, the present, and into what we hope will be the future, what that, digging into what that preferred alternative is for the corridor, and some next steps. So for just a little bit of background, the Martin Way Corridor Study is a partnership, as Sophie mentioned, between TRPC, Thurston County, the cities of Lacey and Olympia, and Inter-City Transit. So we have a really fantastic partnership behind this project. And it's been incredible working with staff and elected officials on both the transportation and land use side for all of these partners. And the purpose of the study as it was envisioned was to develop a common vision for the Martin Way Corridor and really think about some of these key issues: safety, transit, bicycle and pedestrian connections, neighborhood connectivity, land use, all these different pieces. So what do we mean when we say the Martin Way Corridor? It's a long stretch of our region. It extends from that Pacific Triangle where State Avenue and Pacific and Fourth all come together and Martin Way starts. And it goes all the way out to the intersection with Doduro and Meridian Road. And that's more than five miles. It's quite long. And over this course, you go from being in Olympia to being in Lacey, to being in Thurston County, to being back in Lacey, to being back in Thurston County. And so there, you go through a lot of different jurisdictions. But for people, I'm sure all of us have an experience driving, mostly driving, maybe walking or taking the bus along Martin Way. And, you know, you don't think about those jurisdictional divisions when you live or trying to get there. But, and that's a lot of what this corridor planning effort is about. How do we work together to make a seamless experience for the people who build community So we're coming to the end of what's been a fun-filled planning effort with a lot of different pieces. I'm not going to go into the details about all of these pieces, but we had a lot of inputs to this project. We looked at current conditions. We did data analysis. We did a number of different surveys of residents and businesses. We did a market study. We did a bunch of, because we were starting this process and getting it underway during COVID, we did a lot of virtual outreach with the community. And we tried to do a lot of different methods to get there. And all of that information, we're pulling together into the action plan for the Martin Way Corridor, which is our last product. So taking you back, Martin Way, these are some historic pictures of Martin Way. It opened in the 1930s. It was part of the state highway system. And before Martin Way was there, it was really a lot of wetlands, a lot of trees. And I think it's important to emphasize that the Martin Way was constructed to move cars. And it was built to be straight and fast and like a shining part of the state highway system. And so it was really meant to say, how can we get people faster in cars from Olympia across the Nisqually Delta? And until I-5 was constructed in the 1960s, it really was that straight shot. And so it's important when we think about Martin Way today, we think about what it was constructed for originally. It was really constructed to be a highway, to move people quickly and in a straight line. But in the ensuing 80 years, our community has developed around Martin Way, and we use it in really, really different ways today. And there are more than 9,000 people who live in the Martin Way Corridor, which is sort of about up to a quarter mile on either side of that length. And more than 13,000 jobs are in the corridor. And I like to emphasize or just make a note that there are more people who work on Martin Way right now than live on Martin Way. That's something that we may see change in the future, but that's how it is now. It's an economic powerhouse for our region. More than 40,000 vehicle trips, cars along, mostly cars, along Martin Way every day. And yes.
Allison, are you taking questions in the moment or afterwards?
Um, I think if you have, if you need something to clarify, I'm happy to take that. But kind of bigger substantial questions, maybe let's get to the end. Yeah.
Can I just clarify whether these numbers come from before the county moved into the corridor or after?
Oh, you mean it's before.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yep, yeah. And I think there are, of the different transit lines along Martin Way, account for almost a quarter of IT's total ridership. So it's just hugely important to intercity transit. And as far as moving people across our community, it's one of our few east-west routes. So it just serves a lot of functions. We dug in early in the report into coming to a better understanding about who lives and works on Martin Way. And what we find is Martin, the Martin Way Corridor area is one of the more diverse and just really diverse parts of our community. And it has huge income differences across it. So it's not just one thing in any part of the corridor. But a higher proportion of residents who live on Martin Way are likely to be cost-burdened, to be experiencing poverty. We have a higher proportion along Martin Way who rent, a much higher proportion on Martin Way than in any of our individual communities. They live in multifamily units as opposed to single-family housing. A higher proportion speak a language other than English at home. Many different immigrant communities that you see represented, both in the residents along Martin Way and also in the businesses that you see there. When we look at the businesses along Martin Way, there's more than 1,000 of them. And you really, when you think about Martin Way, you might think about the big box stores that are along there that you go to. And those are definitely, retail's a big part of it. But the majority, the vast majority are small businesses. About 50% have five or have fewer than five employees, and three-quarters of them have fewer than 10 employees. So it's mostly small businesses, many of which have been there for a long time. And it's a big draw in our community. A lot of retail, as I mentioned, but also if you think about health services, medical services, we have a major hospital along Martin Way. And so it's a big draw for everyone across the region. When we're thinking about diversity and equity, Martin Way also really stands out. There's a greater proportion of people who live in the corridor who are, identify themselves as a person of color compared to Thurston County as a whole, or Olympia, or Lacey. And so it just is a really, a really diverse corridor. And looking at some of the challenges that we see on Martin Way today, on the transportation side, we have intermittent sidewalks. There are big gaps in the sidewalk network. There are also areas where people, what we hear a lot is that people have trouble getting across Martin Way. Again, it was a state highway. It's really wide. And it's, the kind of crossings are spaced pretty far apart. And so when you think about it as a transit corridor, we heard many examples of people who ride the bus. And then, you know, you're on one side, one way, but then when you come back, you're on the other side of the street. And how do you get across? So we do see a collision history here that, and we have some areas where we see that more likely to be accounted where people are having difficulty getting across the street. Often that's close to getting to a transit stop. Looking at, excuse me, cyclists, there are bike lanes along Martin Way. You might not, might not know that because it can be really intimidating to try to bike along Martin Way. The speeds are pretty fast. People, again, are moving quickly in a straight line. And while you can bike in a bike lane all the way along Martin Way, many people will choose to do something that makes them feel more comfortable, like ride on the sidewalk, which can bring them into conflict with other users. And it's, Martin Way is a major freight corridor. As we've mentioned, it's a major transit corridor. It's how people access, for a lot of our region, I-5, either the direct exit on Martin Way or some of the ones that are pretty close within the corridor. And so we do see different kinds of traffic impacts. And how do we balance all these different uses and the different ways people are using this corridor? When we have an emergency on I-5 that closes, Martin Way is where people go. And so that can, we need it to function as that, in that backup role. On the land use side, really, really varied land use on Martin Way. There are businesses along Martin Way that have been there since the 1930s when it opened. And there are new buildings that are going up that are changing the character of the corridor. And so you think a lot about the retail on the corridor and that there is more multifamily units along the corridor. There are also residential neighborhoods on the corridor that are single-family housing. There's portions of the corridor that are not served by sewer and so are on septic systems and so have challenges in developing at higher densities. And there are, the, one of the things that happened when they punched Martin Way through, before it went around, was to go around major wetlands. But Martin Way crosses three watersheds, crosses three streams, and some really high-quality wetland areas. That makes it very beautiful in some portions of the corridor, but it also means it's really challenging when we expect development to come in and put in some of our transportation Looking to the future, we kind of looked at what, under current, under our current rules, what will development look like on Martin Way? And so even without doing anything, what we expect under, kind of looking at our population forecast, the Martin Way Corridor will likely see a 50, more than 50% increase in population and a 43% increase in employment. We're likely to see more, and we're already seeing more, and likely to see continuing construction of more multifamily development on the corridor. So shifting to an even higher proportion along the corridor of people who are living in apartments and not single-family homes. But all of this pressure is, without doing some real thoughtful planning around it, is likely to lead to increased congestion and conflicts between these different users of the corridor. So the vision for the Martin Way Corridor is that it becomes an attractive, mixed-use, high-density residential and commercial area where people enjoy walking, shopping, working, and living. Over time, it will transition away from automobile-dominated use to a more pedestrian-friendly streetscape that also encourages bicycling and supports high-capacity transit. We worked through this vision throughout this planning effort, but something I want to emphasize is that it's, we really, we confirmed the vision that was already there. This vision has not substantially changed from language that has really existed in all our communities since the early 2000s. And the one change we made in going through this planning process was to add the emphasis on support for high-capacity transit. But this vision is already really consistent with your comprehensive plan, with other planning documents that we have. And we, in reaching out to communities, the community, we really heard that people supported this vision and wanted to see it happen. So I think the next question we were led to is, while we've had this vision for a long time, we're not quite there, and we don't really seem to be getting there in a, in any fast fashion. So what do we need to do to make, to make it happen? And we identified some key needs along the corridor that we're using as the goals for the corridor going forward. I think it's really important that we improve safety for all users in all modes. That came up as very important in all our community outreach. We want to support inclusive growth, so grow on the corridor. But in a way, that's not going to lead to displacement of the communities that are already really invested there. We need to find smart ways to balance the needs of these different users. We're always going to need to balance all these different transportation needs on the corridor. We want to increase connectivity in the corridor and improve continuity. And that has to do with, even though you're going through, in and out of different jurisdictions, it shouldn't feel substantially different for a person traveling that way. And we want to build a sense of place, something that, because Martin Way was a highway, sometimes it feels a lot like it's, that area is designed for people to pass through as quickly as they can. And it feels that way because that's how it was designed. But I think there's a desire to have the corridor be a place where people spend time that it, that it, that they don't just, that they can pass through if they need to, but also that they're, that there's a way to build community there. And that leads us to the preferred alternative for Martin Way. We did do an alternatives analysis where we looked at different options for transportation and land use on the corridor. I'm not going to go into those different alternatives in detail, but if folks have questions about that, I'm happy to talk to that. On the transportation side, we looked at, you know, doing maybe some minimal improvements on the corridor, some moderate improvements, and what we were calling our mighty improvements, some really transformative things. Yes?
One more clarification. When you say preferred alternative, is that the same as when we use those words in environmental impact statement language?
It is not an environmental impact statement.
And so there's no CIPA or pre, anything like we're doing in the, in the Capitol Mall triangle?
Nope.
It's a higher level than that?
It's higher level than that.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful.
Yes, yeah. And when we did our transportation alternatives, we identified that in the short term, the preferred future for Martin Way is to focus on making moderate improvements, so making some big investments at key locations that are particularly focused on improving safety and mobility for people using all different modes. And in the longer term, as a region, we want to move toward these mighty improvements. Make, how do we really make some transformative changes on the corridor to continue to improve safety and mobility? On the land use side, we looked at different alternatives around redevelopment, affordable housing, and looked at both planning, a little bit like we do today, which is we kind of have these long zoning districts along the corridor, or moving to a structure that is what we're calling nodal development. So how do we concentrate our development and our focus on the corridor since it's such a long area? And coming out of our alternatives analysis, the preferred option is to take a nodal approach to development with a focus on affordable housing. So we want to concentrate land use interventions at key nodes, put our investment that way. And that was, some of the analysis that we did indicated that that would be the most successful option. I mentioned we did a lot of different public outreach over the course of this project. And I won't go into all, there's a lot that we learned from that, but I want to hit some of the highlights. What we heard is that overall, there's really strong support from the community in having our jurisdictions find and use new resources to achieve this vision for Martin Way. There's a support from people to do something different on this corridor than what we've done in the past. There's really strong support for proactively improving transportation options on Martin Way, particularly for walking and transit. And there's very strong support for this nodal approach to land use with a focus on affordable housing. And there's a lot that can be done on Martin Way. But we also asked people, where do they think jurisdictions should focus your attention if we have limited resources? And what we heard called out was improving walking conditions, particularly around safety, so crossings and sidewalks and those kinds of connections. So I'm going to dig a little bit more into those, those options. Today, one thing we talked about in this planning effort, Martin Way connects our communities. It really does connect across all those three communities. But Martin Way also serves as a dividing line. It's hard to get across. It kind of splits the community from each other. And what we want to move toward in the future is more, is Martin Way being part of a network. And it has these different nodes. It has different areas that connect them. And it's really, you know, builds, has this sense of place and community along, along the corridor, instead of just being an area that you try to get through as quickly as And in order to achieve that future, we really need to have synced up connections between a focus on transportation, a focus on land use, and leadership and investment over the long term. The future vision, when we talk about transportation on the Martin Way Corridor, we need to see investment in high-impact changes at those key locations. That's particularly, that's something we can start doing right now. We want to see enhanced access to transit over the long term. We want to build out a complete and comfortable network of bicycle and pedestrian connections so people really feel comfortable getting out of their cars and traveling on the corridor in another way. Those options, again, they exist now, but they're not, they don't, you don't, when you go along Martin Way, if you're walking or you're riding, it doesn't feel like that space is for you. It's constructed to be, to be in a car. It's not really built for people to move outside of their cars. And so making that transition is key to achieving this vision. How do we do that? In the short term, we want to fill, make sure we're filling out those gaps in the sidewalk network. And that's a challenge because some of the biggest gaps we have are in areas with environmental constraints. And our funding model often is that we wait for development adjoining areas to make those improvements. And that means we have a really piecemeal system along the corridor. If we want to see a complete, a complete sidewalk pedestrian network, we have to find a different model to get there. We also will want to invest in identifying where we really need more mid-block crossings and installing those improvements. We want to be moving toward creating a physical buffer for the bike lanes so that people can feel safe and comfortable riding on it and like they're equally able to be there as, as a car or another kind of vehicle. And one thing we highlighted is, we call it access management. But in some sections of the corridor, there, there are more than, there are hundreds of driveway access points. And some, one of the biggest collision patterns we see on the corridor are angle collisions. Because if you've ever tried to take a left onto or off of Martin Way, you know, at some point, people just gun it and go. And that's, we heard that a lot from the business community as a big concern. So the way to do that is to consolidate some of those driveways, to look at access management through things like medians, and different kinds of improvements like that to manage that, that access to the corridor. We're already working on some transit improvements, like transit signal priority, giving priority to buses moving along the corridor. We want to continue down that road and have in-lane stops instead of bus pullouts, which helps transit move quicker along the corridor. And again, helps it be, compete on an equal, equal plane with people driving. And we are probably looking at some intersection improvements, so moving from intersections to roundabouts in some locations. In the longer term, we want to continue a conversation around what would it mean to really think about and invest in this, in this corridor as a, as a transit corridor. And so a concept that we talked about a bunch in this project is a business access transit lane. And those are lanes where they're limited to use by buses, by transit, except for some turning where that's needed, some of the business access. And this is a strategy that's used in other communities. It really made a big difference when we looked at our alternative analysis at how quickly transit can move through the corridor and how it can be sort of competitive, really, with, with driving as far as getting people where they need to go. Right now, in our community, we're probably not quite there. We're not quite ready to have the demand to support this. But in the long term, which is what we're thinking about for Martin Way, it's a really, it's a, it makes a lot of sense if we have a priority in having this be a transit corridor. Yes?
When you say short term and long term, is there a certain amount of years associated with those?
That's a great question. And I think that there isn't an exact sort of set of years, but I would say short term is in, is in the five to seven-year timeframe. And the longer term is more of the 10 to 20-year range. That said, longer term doesn't mean we don't have to start thinking about these things now. I think particularly with the transit improvements, business access transit lane, what we want to do is make sure that in the short term, as we're doing improvements on Martin Way, we're not precluding these kinds of options in the long term, that when we're ready for them, that they will still be there for us to do. So we will want to do construction in a way that means it would be very difficult for us to go back in and do like some kind of certain lane or having higher level of protected or separated by infrastructure than we might be ready to do on the corridor now. We want to make sure that, that everyone knows that's the long-term goal to get there, and we have to talk about how to do it and how, again, to make it consistent as we're going through different jurisdictions. Because to do something like a bat lane would require coordination across all those partners. It's not something that you can just go on, go forward with alone and be really successful. It's going to take everyone going together to do it. So in terms of the long So in terms of the long term, that's kind of where I think of the breakout. And I think in the, part of that vision in the long term is to think of Martin Way as part of this broader network, as kind of a belt of a broader, particularly when we're talking about transit, of how we're moving people around our region. And in order to have Martin Way become an area where people are more comfortable walking, biking, taking transit, and more of the trips are happening that way, we're going to need to think about providing some relief for Martin Way for the vehicle load that it gets. Because right now, it's only, it's really, either you're on I-5 or you're on Martin Way if you want to get east to west. And if we want to change that up, we're going to have to give people other options to relieve some of that pressure. And so building out that network is also a key piece of the vision. On the land use side, as I mentioned, we want to move toward developing distinct, dense hubs of activity, where we're combining housing and jobs in these key nodes. We want those nodes to have an emphasis on providing affordable housing. And we want to make sure that those nodes are supporting those transportation connections that we're building in. If you're thinking, again, about a transit system, moving from, you know, the system we have now where there's a driveway every five feet, and you can get on and off wherever, wherever it strikes your fancy, to, if you're in a car, to a transit system where we're thinking about this more periodic structure to the corridor. And we want to combine that with making sure we're incorporating landscaping and placemaking to make the corridor feel like a place that is invested in, and that where people want to spend time. Just a little bit more about the nodal concept for our alternatives analysis. We identified some potential nodes, and those can be around a quarter mile to a half mile, around a key intersection where you're combining that activity. I highlight those on the map. These are not, we just use them for the purposes of the analysis about where nodes could be. But this would be something like through a planning process. It would be good for folks to go through to identify where is the appropriate places that we would want to have these nodes? And what are the standards? Like what should these nodes look like? What should their density be? What should heights be? What should the connections to transit be? Those are the kinds of next steps that would need to happen to make this vision a reality. Just to highlight how the role of the nodes in all our alternatives analysis, as I mentioned at the beginning, even if we don't make any changes, we're likely to see the number of units and the amount of people living on the corridor increase substantially. But with this nodal focus, we can, particularly with one that has an emphasis on creating more affordable housing on the corridor, we found across all our alternatives, that's where we would see the greatest increase in housing on the corridor. And so if we think about wanting to tie our need for housing with our need to wanting to reduce the amount that people are driving and using different modes, Martin Way is one of the places where you can, you could really put those pieces together. Where you have people having options to live on the corridor, having options to work on the corridor, and they have transportation options, but they don't necessarily need to be going very far to get those things done. And the final piece of our future vision is that we'll need to have consistent leadership and investment. In order for this vision to be successful, this corridor needs champions. One of the challenges for the corridor, it was really, when it was built in the 1930s, it was a really shining example of what our state and our region at the time valued. And since then, one of, it's an important part of our region that we all depend on, but it is kind of because it goes through three different jurisdictions. It's sort of on everyone's outskirts. It's sort of not everyone's top priority. And in order for this vision to be successful, we need to have a consistent focus on it at a regional level and at individual jurisdictions. We need leaders to embrace the vision for the corridor and be thinking about it in the way that you've thought about your downtown strategy and, you know, those kinds of things. It's a different, it's very different, but a lot of what we talked about in the project is how do we learn lessons from that downtown planning exercises that folks have gone through? And how do we apply that in a corridor like Martin Way? And one thing I want to emphasize is that the vision that we have for Martin Way is really consistent with your comprehensive plan. It's very consistent with the lessons that have come out of the Transportation Master Plan. And so there's not necessarily a ton of new things that are coming out of this process. It's really focusing back to, and reiterating what we're learning through other efforts about what will help us be successful. So some of the tools to achieve the vision for Martin Way, there are some things we'll be recommending around zoning and development regulations, developing some standards for those nodes, something you're already looking at now in Olympia is reducing parking standards came up, and our market study is being really important to achieving the development we want to see on the corridor, developing standards for what we want to see for affordable housing on the corridor, and how do we have an anti-displacement standard? So how are we going to think about people who live on the corridor now? What spaces are we creating for them to be there in the long term? We also want to think about new financial tools, or expanding existing financial tools for Martin Way. That includes looking at the multifamily tax exemption. We've looked at some of the options around tax increment financing, so developing some kind of special district for Martin Way that can help increase investment back into the corridor. Could also look at civic investments, so looking at investments in placemaking along the corridor, investments in that transportation or other kinds of capital infrastructure that might be languishing. And in order to make the type of development we want to see possible on the corridor, it's likely there'll need to be land acquisition or other kinds of investment to make that development feasible. And we also have some options around looking at public-private partnerships to bring that focus to the corridor, some kind of corridor group, or Business Improvement District to kind of, again, keep that focus. Looking at doing more creative development agreements to get the kind of development funded on the corridor that is in line with the vision. And recruiting and bringing on what we're calling them anchor institutions, but these could be public facilities, or they could be some other kind of major draw on the corridor that will anchor those nodes especially, and make them a place that will bring other kinds of investment in. And I just want to emphasize that in order to be successful in this corridor with some of the analysis we did, we really will need these higher-order actions to be in place. As I mentioned, we've had the vision for Martin Way for a long time. A lot of what folks have tried to do to date is through regulatory zoning and development, and that has helped. It's changed the kind of development we see on the corridor. But in order to get to that transformative change, we're going to need to move up the ladder. And I just want to emphasize that Martin Way in many ways is where some of the major regional goals that you all have and that are a discussion in this community and across our region, where we can, you know, for lack of a better metaphor, where the rubber really hits the road, meets the road. If we, our sustainable Thurston vision says our land use alternative, that we will increase density in our corridors, and we will concentrate more of our growth in our city centers and corridors. Martin Way has capacity to do this. We're not on track right now to meet those goals, but if we achieve this vision for Martin Way, we'll be a lot, a lot longer along that route. On climate mitigation, if we want to reduce transportation emissions and move toward having people use different modes instead of driving alone, Martin Way is a key to achieving that. If we want to address disparities in our community, health disparities, income disparities, Martin Way is an area where we see those disparities and where we can begin to address some of those. If we want to address housing and the housing challenges in our corridor, we really see them playing out in Martin Way on many different levels. And there's an opportunity there because it is a more affordable part of our community where we can maintain and increase affordable housing options. So overall, what we've learned is that keeping to the status quo means the vision for Martin Way will not be attainable in the near future, over the next 20 to 25 years. But with interventions in transportation, we can improve safety on the corridor and improve access for people, however they're traveling. And by, with interventions in land use, we can build vibrancy, we can build investment on the corridor while we're accommodating the growth that we're expecting. But in order to do that, we're going to need to continue to maintain a regional focus on this corridor. It can't kind of go back into, kind of be on the shelf and not a focus for us in the long term. And I will wrap it up there.
Thank you, Allison. And I'm sure there's questions. And since we're in a study session, I'm also hoping that as there's questions, I'll keep a queue going, but we can also, if you have a follow-up to the question or an add-on to the conversation that's happening, maybe we could make room to continue that conversation and then jump to the next thread, if that's okay. Great. All right. And it looks like Councilmember Nguyen would like to kick it off.
Allison, I have two quickies. So for residents on the corridor, are you, how are you counting the residents? Because I know that you could peel off to many different neighborhoods, but is it just literally on Martin Way?
Yeah, we, for the most part, what we did is we kind of did a corridor extent is that map that we showed right at the beginning, going from state to Meridian, and about a quarter mile on each side. And so we really just looked at who's within that area.
Oh, okay. And then I don't recall anything about speed, and maybe you covered it, but if you could talk a little bit about, I know it's hard to see into the crystal ball, clearly, but looking at what we would like it to be, according to your presentation and the different modes of transportation, can you talk a little bit about what impacts that might have on speed?
Yeah, absolutely, I can. And then Sophie, you might want to jump in. So we, one thing is that speeds are pretty fast on the corridor. They change a lot over the course of it. And I think there's a lot of, a lot of studies coming out now indicating some of the safety risks about the speed that we have. That said, I think something that we talked about is that just reducing the speed limit would probably have minimal effect on the safety, because again, it's still, you're still driving on a highway. We all do it. We get on there, and it's just, it's just so tempting. That's what it's there for. When we looked at our different alternatives around transportation, we were really, one of the things we really wanted to explore is what are the trade-offs for going big in these different modes? Right now, it is designed, and the reason people, things people like, when we would ask them, what do you like about Martin Way? And there often weren't a lot of things, but they were like, I can really get where I need to, I can just, I get on it and I can just keep going. And it's true that if we, for example, that the mighty alternative, looking at if we were to do a bat lane for transit, that will have an impact on how fast people can get through the corridor. But I think what it does, it means more people are able to move through the corridor on transit. And so there are trade-offs between the modes in our different alternatives. And one thing that we asked people was, would you be willing to make that trade-off? Would you be willing to go, for it to take, you know, take a little longer to get where you need to go if it was safer and more predictable? Because that's part of the issue now. I think there's a lot, you're getting a lot of anxiety on that corridor because you're like, is this light going to go? Is someone going to be coming at me from the side? And what we heard really overwhelmingly was, yes, if it's a little more predictable, I'm willing to give up a little bit of speed in order to make it safer for everyone. So I don't know, Sophie, if you want to hit on anything else around speed?
Yeah, we actually just looked at what we call 85th percentile speeds along Martin Way. That means the speed at which the majority of people are traveling. And, you know, we sort of flag the corridors that, or our major streets that have high 85th percentile speeds, and this is one of them. So we're seeing people traveling, the 85th percentile speed is over 40 miles per hour, like 40.7. It varies throughout the corridor, and granted, that's just Olympia. And what Allison's saying is friction. Friction is key to reducing speeds, and that means trees, it means activity, it means things along the corridor that causes a driver to say, I should probably slow down here. I should probably look out for things that I'm seeing along the edge of the street. And we can achieve that through landscaping, through more activity, which is brought about by land uses. But also, we can think innovatively here about swales and medians in the middle of the road to cause people to kind of chicane around a central median where we're collecting stormwater, or we're putting landscaping. So as Allison said, the more we can kind of cause people to have a little deflection instead of just going straight, that's important in street design, too. And then just real quick, we think a lot about street design that, as Allison's saying, it's, traffic flows, but it's probably going to move more slowly. And that's really what our objective is. We're not trying a lot, to introduce a lot of stop and go, but we want things to move more slowly but at a predictable and safer pace. So hopefully that helps.
Go ahead, Councilmember Partially. Lisa, are we using first names because it's a study session?
Use Lisa.
All right.
That's good. I'm way more comfortable with that. I got a couple, so I'm just going to ask one so my councilmates can ask more. Well, which one do I want to ask? The green spaces one. And I've noted that in the report, you talked about some areas that, you know, the connectivity of our sidewalks and our bike lanes are because of wetlands. And I think you said there was three watersheds. Is there any way to incorporate those into parks and so that they're built-in green spaces, because we may not be able to build on them anyways, and automatically build in some parkland along this that is placemaking?
We talked about that a little bit, I think, and Doris and Sophie can speak to this a little more. And there aren't a lot of park spaces along the corridor, and so people who live on the corridor don't have places to go. I think what we talked about is, because those are pretty sensitive areas, we don't necessarily want a park system that's going to be intrusive on them. But can we incorporate views? Can we make a walking experience where people are able to, sorry, participate, take in those areas? Can we have something that's a little bit interpretive to be like, oh, there's salmon going through here? Or what are these wetland plants? Or how does this connect to our shellfish beds, because it goes through Henderson Inlet? How does it connect to East Bay as we're going over Indian Creek? And help people make those watershed connections. So I think as far as parks, we were thinking more about small spaces, like small improvements that can be gathering spaces for people, or that can bring that view of nature into the transportation infrastructure, or into the development structure that we have, rather than, than kind of large parks, which would end up being a lot to maintain as well.
I think you nailed it, what I was thinking, actually, more interpretive, something you see, something that breaks up the buildings that's green. And that's, yeah, thank you.
Just go ahead, Leonard.
Thank you. For the record, Leonard Bauer, Community Planning Development Director, right? I think there's a point there, though, that would be really important to reemphasize something that Allison said, which is, these stretches that are wetlands or sensitive areas are, you know, will not have development, will not have private development. And frankly, the way our codes are set up now and our requirements for building frontage and sidewalks and bike lanes and all those things, they won't get those either, because there won't be any development to pay for it. So one of the points here is, there's big chunks of Martin Way So one of the points here is, there's big chunks of Martin Way that are going to have to have public investment to get sidewalks and bike lanes and crossings or whatever these, these improvements are, because there won't be private development to pay for that. So I just, you know, to really bluntly say it, they, it won't happen unless we pay for it. And so that's going to be a challenge on Martin Way. And it already has been where we have things like Merritt Manor right adjacent and a big chunk of wetland right next to it that we could not require Merritt Manor to put that sidewalk all the way down to Ensign Road because it's not all their property. And there's just, there's just wetland there with private, with private property, but it's unbuildable. So how are we going to do that? So I just want to really underscore that.
Go ahead, Danny.
Yeah, following that thread a bit. So are those areas in, for the Olympia part of this, have we identified those area, you know, we're going to be talking a lot about sidewalks this year, so have we identified those areas where we know that public investments are going to be needed? Otherwise, we're just not going to get that connectivity.
If there's no sidewalk, it will be in the Transportation Master Plan because we focus on our major streets for sidewalk improvements. And those improvements are going to be prioritized around proximity to things like bus stops and other big destinations. But we can certainly, so the TMP, Transportation Master Plan, is going to include all of those sidewalk missing gaps. They'll be prioritized based on factors that have to do with pedestrian need, but it doesn't prevent us from saying, you know, in five years, wow, a lot of this has filled in and this is a remaining piece and we should focus on this piece in front of the wetland because we're not going to see any development there. So the, the framework is there to prioritize those sidewalks and it's really about us finding the grant money or the other capital dollars to, to, to fill in those missing gaps.
Thanks. I just wanted to add one more thing that the group talked about from both the land use and the transportation side, is these are also places where we have great trails in close proximity going north, south, and east-west. And so really looking at how can we make sure we're facilitating people to access those trails and use those trails to meet their transportation or recreation needs as well. And so that tied into the sidewalk piece, it also tied into some of the park discussions we had as well, especially the smaller park areas that we were thinking about for the corridor.
Thanks for that. Just, Sophie, were you saying that like as the development comes along, then we would prioritize the sidewalks?
Yeah, we did. Explain that quite well. So in the TMP, you'll see all the missing links are ranked. And so, and some of those we will build, some of those private development will build. But among the pieces that we know we're not going to see private development, we can have a sort of a sub-ranking that says, "This one scores higher than this one, so we should probably address this piece in front of a wetland before another piece." So I'm saying there's an overarching prioritization structure under which we can say, "This one will never see redevelopment. We should probably focus on this one."
Okay, okay. And would we wait until there's development on either side of it? Or would we, could we go ahead and prioritize that to kind of try to stimulate the kind of development we'd like to see?
Yeah, we could go ahead and prioritize it.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dante.
Yes, thank you, Allison, for this presentation. It's exciting to have, or at least to get briefed on a vision like this for the corridor, which I imagine would be, you know, very alluring for business development eventually as well as we see, as we talk about more housing development along the corridor. And that just has me thinking about what exactly, you know, how are our partners in the conversation about the continuity of the corridor? Which I really appreciate, by the way, and I appreciate the foresight about displacement. So with that, we, that means that, you know, for the city of Olympia, we have an equity framework that we work with to ensure that folks aren't displaced as we continue to bring this vision about. So how are our partners considering that as well in this? Because I imagine that we all have, it sounds like there's some unity right now, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page there.
Yeah, excellent question. You know, I think what we talked about in, in this project is that all of the partners are really on board with this vision. It's really a shared, preferred alternative that folks want, including that emphasis on affordable housing and nodal development in the corridor. What we talked about is there, folks will probably have different ways of getting there in the different corridor. Just because we want better continuity along the corridor doesn't mean it's going to be exactly the same in every way. And so I will, I think that equity is important to all the different partners in, in how they do it, but I think there will be different methods for how each jurisdiction is handling it in their region, depending on their resources. But I think there's a lot for folks to learn from each other for how people do it differently. Olympia funds parks one way, Lacey funds parks another way. That doesn't, having that element to it is important in both, in both jurisdictions, but they're likely to get there different ways. And I think we'll see the same thing around, around equity or different areas. One of the reasons I think we've really identified a need to have a continuing regional conversation is so that people can continue to share how they're, how, what's working and not working and kind of how to make sure things are synced up in different parts of the corridor. A big part of the conversation, I'll just highlight in Lacey, to one thing across the corridor that you see is there's a really high proportion of manufactured home parks on the corridor. Probably a lot of, a lot of the ones that we see across our whole region are on Martin Way. Again, that goes back to the fact that it was a motor, it's like a, it's kind of history as a state highway. And many of those are low-income areas that are served to some of our most vulnerable community members. And there's a real concern that if this corridor develops, that we would see displacement in those areas. So that, that's been an element that's come up as of high concern in some of our partners is how do we, how do we think about how to, how to think about the use of space on the corridor and who it's serving? And how do we create spaces for people even if it, even if, as it changes and evolves in the future?
Thank you. Yeah, I just asked that question just because it's, I think we've seen this tale time and time again, right? When we see new development in an area. And so, like I said, I just really appreciate the foresight from all of our partners in thinking about that and ensuring that as we bring about this new vision, that we think about the folks that are already there. So I appreciate that.
One of the things that I'm excited about the timing of this is because we're, it's sort of coming towards the end of its process at the same time we're starting to ramp up our comprehensive plan amendment process. And we already know that housing is huge emphasis in our comp plan update, but we also have all of the new state requirements. And so we have to actually look at displacement in a much more structured way than we've ever had to in the past. And I think that's, I think it's good timing for this to work into that, especially as the, the long-range planners across the county have to start working on all of this together. So I think we're already thinking about it. We don't necessarily know exactly how we're going to get there yet, but the discussions have started, so that's good. Oh, Leonard, did you want to?
Leonard, yeah. But just, just one more exciting thing about the timing of this is, you know, the federal infrastructure funding that's coming down the pike matches pretty well with that short-term timeframe of five to seven years that Allison mentioned earlier. And the foresight that this team has had and everybody who worked on this plan to look at the equity and displacement issues will bode well in the applications for that funding, as will a regional effort. And so one of the takeaways I hope you take from this is, if we can work together with the other partners on this for implementation in the next five years or so, there could be an awful lot of opportunities for infrastructure funding to help do some of those short-term actions, including the ones that address both land use and transportation.
Danny?
Very good lead-in to something I've been thinking about. Of course, we have our own things we need to do on the Olympia side. I can think of long stretches that don't have sidewalks. But what is the next step to bring about this regional coordination? Like, I don't think it's appropriate to try to bring it through the Transportation Policy Board or other groups because there's more jurisdictions involved. Is it, is it getting an MOU together to, to start formally engaging with Lacey and Thurston? I mean, Allison, I see that you've done this really great plan here and you're like, "Great, now you guys, it's your turn. You gotta, you gotta keep it going, keep it alive." And this isn't the first time we've seen something like this between these three jurisdictions. There's been urban corridor work before that's, as you've mentioned before, just kind of fallen flat. Like, there's not much that has happened around it. So, so what is that next step? And this infrastructure funding's coming, like, it's, it's, it's right around the corner. So what do we got to do with Lacey and Thurston County to move us, to make sure that we are continuing to coordinate around this and working together so that we're prepared?
I've got lots of ideas.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, I think that there, it, it should be a conversation among all the partners about how to move forward. But I can offer a few thoughts. One is that we already do have a next step that we're working on. We have some funding in the state budget to do a crossing strategy for Martin Way. Again, bringing together the same partners and digging into that number one issue that came up is how do, how are we going to help? Where do we need to help people get across the corridor? And what are those connections, pedestrian connections? So we will be continuing to coordinate at the, at the staff level on that piece of it. When we talked about that regional conversation, the discussion we've had was around that the connector there is transit. And we're really talking about what is the future in transit, not just for Martin Way, but Martin Way is really key to our entire, to intercity transit's entire system. And so they're, they're well-positioned to be, to be a leader in that discussion, really thinking about what would it mean for us to transition from the type of transit system we have now to a real kind of spoke-type system like we would be, like we're talking about on Martin Way. And so there, there are different forms that that could take. There are a couple of different structures that will outline in the, in the action plan as options for people to look at. But that, that really is a, a conversation to have among, among the partners about how they want to have that, that continuing conversation.
Leonard, do you have some more ideas about how we all work together?
Well, I hesitate to share things that just are in my head because I wasn't really a part of this planning effort and these folks did such a great job. But yeah, I mean, that, that crossings activity is really exciting because one of the things you need for funding is, you know, specific projects that are kind of, you know, I don't want to use shovel-ready, but you know, ready to go soon and then prioritized by the region through its partners. So that, that's a really exciting effort. And I think, you know, similar types of actions that will be in the plan, in the action plan for this, you know, taking immediate steps on those together with, with our partners to get us set up so that when those calls for funding come out, we know exactly what we have as the highest priority. We can demonstrate that. We've done all the planning. We can show them what we need. We can do the same on, on some of the things, too. But, and some of the land use tools that'll be in the action plan, I think are super important as well to get that private investment on, on that side. Because again, they're going to build, private investment will still build the majority of the sidewalk and bike lane and such that we need along this corridor. So how do we, how do we incentivize that private development? How do we set up our regulatory structure to, to get it in the way we want it in a consistent way across the three jurisdictions? That's, that's a challenge. But I think grant funding there can also help because one of the biggest challenges is, is staffing capacity at all three jurisdictions to do that work. And so if there's grants that can add to that, bring in temporary employees or add to our staffing capacity, I think that would be really, really important.
I've got Jim and then Lisa.
My brain doesn't work quite this way, so I'm going to unload a few thoughts and then ask a question. This is great work. So thanks for, for telling the story because I hear rumblings around town and you're not quite sure what, 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 what is happening. And to start with the last conversation, I think for me, some sort of binding joint sub-area planning interlocal agreement is the next step. And, you know, my question, which I'll give you a hint of, is for that to happen, the other two jurisdictions have to get their comp plans in order so that they're building the form and function that we desire on that high-density corridor. Ours is getting built. When I look at the 40, you know, 40% of this corridor that's in Olympia, all of the low-income housing that's been built on, like, in the corridor has been built there. In fact, I would venture to guess all of the housing in SubArea 1 and 2 in the last 10 years has been low-income housing. And yet, that's this concentration of like five of our largest employers right in that area. We have the whole hospital district, we have Crown, we have Georgia Pacific, we now have the county and, and intercity transit. And so somewhere we need to build market-rate housing for these really well-paid professional positions that are now working right here. And so I know affordable means affordable for where you're at, but I feel like there needs, there needs to be a body of work to do some prioritization of housing income type by node based on what's there. Also pointing out that three of the four streams cross through in the first, in the 40% that are in the city of Olympia. And to Lisa's point, like, how do we do green space and how do we make sure that we're developing in other places so those will be well-preserved and not building sidewalks in our neighborhoods that go nowhere so that we can fund sidewalks that are usable in, and I'm only saying that because I, I walked on one yesterday that made no sense. And it could have been, you know, a good chunk of change for a block in front of Martin Way or along Martin Way. The, you know, to me, go big or go home, like paint the bus lanes on the road now and remove two driving lanes and slow down the traffic and that'll force a certain number of people out of their car just by doing that, I think. And I think intercity transit could probably hang with that kind of a, of a service level. Like, the one is almost that already, right? Of course, this is just me and my brain. The, you know, the, so a request, if this is still draft, I would just love to see the, the inner, or sorry, the transit-oriented development example in the executive summary changed to a different intersection. The intersection at Carpenter and Martin Way has probably contaminated metal site, a public facility that's in design for something else. And, and it's not the part of Martin Way that needs to be invested in first, and it's the first thing you see. So that's just a comment from my perspective. And then I am really curious, like, what, what is going on in Lacey and Tamwa, or Lacey and the county around their comprehensive plans? Have they brought them into alignment with the last draft that Olympia did to start getting that, you know, the, the more density and the buildings on the sidewalk? Because the late, the development of late out in Martin Way is still, tends to be a big box in the middle of a giant parking lot. And that has to change at the same time as, as getting to a point where we're planning, planning together and the, you know, sort of, so that's my question. Like, are, are we in alignment enough to go into this sub-area planning?
So what I'll point to is when we looked at housing on the corridor, the, there, there really wasn't much, there's very little multi-use, almost none at all. And there's, despite that being the vision, and the, there's very little, there had been very little multifamily housing built at all in the corridor. With the exception is in the last five now, probably seven years, that easternmost section of the corridor that's in Lacey in particular, and actually part of the UGA now as well, if you think of Copperwood, there's just a lot of development housing that's gone in, a really stark change from what happened before. Why? Well, because it became desirable enough and that's where the vacant land on the corridor was. The challenge for the rest of the corridor is that we don't have a lot of vacant land left. So I think what it's proven, what we see in Lacey, Lacey put a lot of standards in place and it took it a while because, because that was the farthest east. And development on the corridor has kind of moved out, jumps over those wetlands. But it's, it's, it's really in the last five to 10 years that, that if you drive all the way out to the eastern part of the corridor, it looks extremely different today than it used to. And they, those buildings are right up on the street, they've got different kinds of components to them. I mean, I think, I think Lacey really sees that they've had I mean, I think, I think Lacey really sees that they've had a lot of, they're seeing success on this corridor. They're building to the corridor standard. The challenge is that this corridor is pretty old. And so there's, and a lot of it developed in the thirties and forties and fifties before we had the stormwater standards we had today, before we had the land use standards we had today. And for people to go in and retrofit to those standards in the environmental conditions that we have with critical areas, Merritt Manor's a great example of that. That Bailey Insight is, was so challenging to develop. Um, that's, I think there's a lot of alignment around the vision, uh, but it, it's, it's a big lift to get there. Uh, and I think for the county parts of the corridor, that's a challenge. It's an urban UGA. It's, um, it's hu- it's different from anything else that's kind of under county jurisdiction. There's a lot, again, a lot of infrastructure challenges in those areas. A lot of those residences are, uh, like I mentioned, um, on septic systems because of when they were constructed. That's extremely expensive and challenging to deal with. So a lot of Martin Way, like many parts of our community is, is, uh, you maybe see what, if we could, if we were starting with a blank slate now, we probably would do it differently. But we have, people live in this area and they've invested in this area. And so how do you, um, move toward a future that, that supports, uh, what's on the ground, um, but, but bends the, bends the arrow toward where, where you wanna go in the future? So I think there's, and to your question about, do we have all our partners on board? I think the answer is really yes. Um, but again, they're coming from slightly different ways and seeing different things, what their main challenges are.
I, I really appreciate that because I think one of the things, you know, especially in land use, there's a lag between doing like what the neighbors are really doing and what, what they're talking about. And, you know, I, later, I'm curious if they've, you know, protected mobile home parks like we have and some of those other things in that, in that same quarter. I think the, the comment I'll make about how things are being built now, i- it's a lot better, but it makes my heart hurt to see a one-story 7-Eleven on a highway, right? Like, it just, it just isn't okay in the, in the, in how we're trying to talk about developing our community. So that, you, you give me optimism and hope, so thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Lisa, before we, can I follow up real quick with, Cheryl had a question when we were talking at lunch about sort of, well, what does winning look like? And the image that we used, one of the last images in the presentation was, uh, of International Boulevard. Um, and so the, the wide medians, the landscaping, some fancy lighting, the busts, rapid transit lane are all there. Um, but a- and then there's, um, right up against the sidewalk, multifamily housing and, and motels. Um, and I guess the question is, is that what winning looks like? Because it's still a six and five-lane road and now it's got a lot of low-income immigrant people who are walking across it and might as well be walking out into I-5, from my perspective. So, um, I, I just, I wonder, and I'm, and I, it jogged my mind, you're talking about that section from Marvin de Duderow around River Ridge High School, because those strip malls became neighborhood centers that are really vital and busy. And I call it the Curry Corner Effect, you know, that, that they've become, yeah, real hot. So I, I see, even though it's one story, I see that as a kind of winning. And then I wonder, are we holding up International Boulevard as our example of winning at remaking Highway 99?
That's excellent observation. I think, uh, something we talked about with our consultants is that, so I think maybe we all have a picture in our mind of what an urban corridor should look like. And, um, maybe someday our region, that's what we'll get to, uh, and we'll have, um, all those amenities, uh, but, but we're along, population-wise, market-wise, uh, we're, we're a ways away from some of that type of development like you might see in, in Seattle or in Portland. Um, that's not our market and, and with the experts that we brought into this process, w- we're still a ways away from that. So what does winning look like? I think, you know, your, that's a community conversation to define what that, what that really means for each of these jurisdictions. Because I think it will look different in different parts of the corridor. Um, but it might not be multi-use the way we think of it where it's retail and then it's housing. It might be what, what they call a horizontal multi-use where you have, it's, it's maybe, you know, three or four stories, um, but there's different parts, you know, kind of in, in this bigger area. So you still have the mixed uses that are there, um, but they're not necessarily all stacked on top of each other. Um, I think there's, there, we'll need to define what transit-oriented development means in a region and a market of our size and with our conditions. We're not, uh, the Puget, the King County region. We're not planning light rail stations at this point, not that we could and ever do it in the future, but right now. But we are looking at bus rapid transit and a lot of those same issues on a different scale. And so I think it is really important for these next steps is to define what it means for our region to have this vision. It's gonna look different than it looks, uh, in Shoreline and in Seattle.
Thank you, Allison. Lisa, go ahead.
No, that was an excellent question. Thank you. Because I've been sitting here and I admit my bias, I grew up in Portland and I was there when they planned the, uh, western extension of Beaverton-Heldesdale Highway, but they used MAX, the, um, light rail. And, um, how they built it, um, was about a different transit, not cars. And if I had my way in Olympia, I would also start moving away from cars to transit instead of a six-lane, uh, three each-way and basically a freeway, uh, between, in our town. I, I would like to actually cut that down. Um, I'm just, you know, one, thank you for this. Uh, this is fantastic. And I didn't say that when I first asked my question. This is really good. I'm a complete fan because I've seen what Portland was able to do with it. And it started rough and with the community actually pushing back pretty hard, um, especially on some of the parcels of land. Um, my question, I'm channeling Councilmember Madron, and that is, as we put these nodes in and we are trying to do a nexus with affordable housing and node displacement, which is, I'm strongly for, how are we ensuring we're not developing food deserts within there? And I'm not talking about restaurants because that's expensive. We need to make sure that we have access to food that's affordable in these nodes, especially if we're really gonna concentrate affordable housing. Thank you, Danny, for that thought.
The Lacey Food Bank is actually in this quarter.
Excellent. But, you know, because if we're gonna do those nodes, we need, I would really like to see a plan for that.
I, I mean, I don't have a specific strategy for you. I mean, I, but I think that is an important thing to think about in designing, uh, or coming up with the standards, but also the incentives for their, those nodes. I, I think we're all familiar with situations where you can, you can build it and will they come? Uh, there's many examples where we've said, "Oh, we want X, Y, or Z here." And, and you have to create the market conditions, but it's still up to private individuals to come in and wanna have the kinds of businesses you wanna have. That said, if you, I mean, the exciting thing, what's so cool about this project is I spent a lot of time on Martin Way and there are really great, uh, a- anything that you want, you can get there. Like, there, people have all kinds of businesses doing all kinds of things there and there's lots of really great, there are great restaurants on Martin Way, but there are great food stores. And I, I think if you create a situation where the bar isn't too high for people to come in and have those businesses, um, and you make really flexible spaces that can serve multiple functions, uh, those are some of the lessons learned from some of, uh, the, the examples that we've looked at in other communities. Just to allow for that flexibility so that it's easy for people to come in and modify the space to what is needed in that location. Um, and, but that maybe like precludes things that, that are kind of dead in spaces, that like won't create that community feel that you want.
Yeah. And including spaces for farmers' markets that are, you know, publicly owned or even community gardens that are small.
Yeah. I think that, that concept of, um, having, having sort of that sort of civic placemaking be a part of that, when we have these nodes, that might be designating some kind of space that is some kind of incubator for something. Um, whether that's, uh, a branch of the library, whether that's, um, some kind of community art and meeting space, uh, whether that's, um, some kind of, uh, branch of the, um, farmer's market or something like that. But that, that, there should, what we talked about is that in these nodes, there should be some kind of element like that, a gather, a reason for people to gather there.
You know, I have, I have a hunch that since these folks were young planners, there's been master plans that had the dream of the grocery store drawn on them. And, um, it turns out that you can't just draw a grocery store into existence. So I-
You can't?
Yeah. Um, that's, it's just that it's been a perennial issue, but I, I think that having the, the transit corridor is part of the answer also. That there might not be a, a grocery store right there, but there's an international market at one end, cash and carry in the middle, and supermarkets at our end of it. That anyhow, that's, boy, go ahead, Danny.
Yeah. I think it would actually be a really fascinating study to look at what options there are for food, uh, in this quarter, because I think we'll find that there's a really great Asian food store. You know, you mentioned Curry Corner and they sell Indian food, uh, there, not, not just restaurant food, but, um, grocery-style food as well. You know, Winko, very affordable grocery store right there. Uh, and, you know, I mentioned the Lacey Food Bank and right behind it is Hockey Farmers Collective where they do have some community gardens there. So I think it would actually be a really fascinating study and we can always do better, um, especially when it comes to access to fresh, locally-grown food. Um, and while I've got the mic here, I just wanna, um, make sure that, um, you know, it sounds like, you know, you're passing the ball, you've passed it to us, you passed it to Lacey, passed it to Thurston County, all these balls are in play here. And, um, I'm wondering, are we giving clear direction to Mr. Bernie right here in terms of, uh, conversation with the Lacey City Manager and the County Manager in terms of discussing what these next steps are to have like tangible movement forward, whether that's an ILA, MOU, whatever acronym we wanna use to move this forward?
Yes. I mean, in fact, the note I took is really around kinda how we move forward in our local around this. And, you know, as I'm sitting here and as I, as I've read this and I really contemplated it and how we make the node developments happen and how we, um, you know, we've made this link between, um, land use and transportation, but there's also a significant link to our Olympia Strong and our economic development work when you think about anchor institutions. There's a big link to the work that we're doing in our housing homelessness programs and the Regional Housing Council, um, and how we identify the areas and places and, and find different partners to build the types of housing that we need. So I think there's a lot of pieces here and I think that, um, the idea of an interlocal agreement that really binds us to some timeframes and some identification of, um, even on the moderate improvement projects. If we're gonna be ready in time to receive, as Leonard said, monies from the infrastructure projects, we're gonna need to find some projects, get them at least thirty percent designed, get them along the way so that we're in a really good position to seize those opportunities. So I think there's some work right away through interlocal to identify what we think are the priority spots to focus our time on, to be ready for those investments of dollars in our community. Um, and also think about how we're linking to some of the other documents and some of the other planning efforts that are underway, um, as well.
I appreciate that question, Danny, because that's where my, my mind was going to. And, I mean, this was a half a million-dollar project, right, to get us here, a little more with the ma- well, double that with the match or was it a twenty-five percent match? Anyway, plus the batch, right? And, and so we, I think we have to find some money to plan with or we're not gonna really be able to put pen on, pen on paper about, about an interlocal. And, you know, so that, that's the challenge that sits in front of me is like, this will not fit in our work plan now unless it has a, a pot of money that comes to it. And so how do we keep from getting further behind? And, and then whatever work the Transportation Policy Board and the sub, or, and the NTRPC can do to tighten up priorities within this so we know what, what are the twenty lowest-hanging fruit projects that we all should dump money in, even before we do any more studying, right? Like, we know bullbout, you know, bullbouts and crosswalks and bus or whatever sewer i- i- in that area that, that are, that are the easiest. I don't know, that might've been starting as a question, but it was just really a long statement. So thank you for listening.
Yes. So I'm thinking about, um, you know, the number of gas stations we have al- along, uh, the Martin Way corridor. And so I'm just thinking about, um, obviously, transportation is, is a huge part of this. And so, uh, and we're considering our emission reductions in, in this future planning. So, um, I'm not sure how many, uh, electric vehicle charging stations are along Martin Way at all right now. Um, but I think it would be good, not only for residents and businesses, but also the fact that it is so close to the interstate. Um, and we're talking about an economic opportunity here as well, um, that folks are perhaps coming off of the interstate to charge their vehicles and we're giving them a reason to sort of stick around in this new intimate, uh, you know, corridor that we're, that we're gonna be creating here. So that's just a thought, uh, about how we might wanna do that, um, uh, for future planning of vehicles that are, as we transition from fuel to electric.
You know, the other thing, and, and Councilmember Cooper brought up, the county's new facility. And as we think forward to our planning around a new maintenance facility on Carpenter Road, then I think about how we planned around the location of where we constructed this city hall to be an anchor for development to happen. And I think there's a role for government beyond just the infrastructure. I think those investments that we're making, I'm thinking about how many businesses are gonna open their doors up because of the number of employees at the county building. Now they're gonna be looking for options during their lunch hours and other things. And so I think there's some opportunities here before all that starts to happen to make sure we're deliberate about the land use planning around all of that. So I think there's, that there's some time right now, we really have to move a little quicker than, um, probably what we're thinking, to make sure that we're ready for that growth to happen, uh, especially on the land use side. So, um, but anyway, I just, I thought it was interesting that you asked that question because I think the county locating there and then some other future, um, public development that will happen in that area is gonna bring employee bases to that area too, that when we see what happened here, it caused other things to happen, um, in this side of town because we're relocated city hall. So I think, anyway, I just wanna share that thought.
I, I would just add, add to that, um, something we've talked about. So for Martin Way, I think, I think it takes for staff and for policymakers and for community members to really shift their thinking about Martin Way. For a long time, it's sort of been, um, we have a vision, but we'll kind of take what we can get on the corridor. Um, when what fits best there, what the market wants to build there for a long time was, um, things that with a lot of surface parking, because you had a lot of space and the land was kind of cheap, and that's what, what worked out. And so we see a lot of, um, boat and trailer storage, tire storage, um, uh, many kinds of businesses that are important and that serve a real need in our community. And, and it's not that, they're not important, that, that they don't have a role. Um, but I think, if you think about the vision and what, what our vision for the region and where we wanna concentrate our growth, where there are transportation options and have people who can afford to live near where they need to get and get the things they need near where they live, um, Martin Way is a valuable place. And it's, that is a value that I think we haven't thought about when we're, um, approving developments. Um, if you put this thing in, it precludes something else, uh, that, um, won't be able to go in there. If you put another mini-storage location here, uh, that means there won't be a small grocery store here. Uh, and so, so, some of what we talked about is how do we think about that in the permitting? How do we create value, uh, recognition that, that these spaces, um, while they are lower cost in many cases, they have a value to our community and our vision and we don't wanna give that away, um, without getting, uh, the value that, that we see in this, in this limited resource of this corridor.
Well, and that's where, on, on your slide around land acquisitions, right? So we're, we're, we all have some controls to think about strategic pieces of property where we wanna see things happen. And, and the cities and the counties making strategic investments to acquire those properties so that we can, we can kinda drive things where we want them to go. Because I agree, once something's built that you didn't really wanna see as part of the vision, it, you start, we start to lose ground at a pretty quick pace. So I think, as we think about interlocal, that's another piece of that is how can we be strategic about identifying what those kinda anchor pieces of property are and, and then, and then get them in our possession so we can really kinda drive- and then and then get them in our possession so we can really kind of drive this the way we want it to go. So, it's another, I'm glad you mentioned that.
I appreciate that. So, there's the possibility of acquiring some of those parcels. There's also, as we're in comp plan update time, there's the possibility of reconsidering zoning that favors denser, mixed-use sort of development rather than industrial uses. So, I'm wondering, as we're heading towards wrapping up, if you could talk from both the transportation side and the land use side, are there are there things suggested by this study that are not currently part of our transportation master plan or our our major planning efforts that that need to happen in the next couple of years? And what decision points would come to council between now and and the end of the comp comp plan updates?
Yeah, thank you for prompting that question, because I've been sitting here thinking like, we need to tell a little more of this story. So, are there things that are not in the transportation master plan or decision points coming to the council? There, the Bat Lane is crucial, that that decision and the timing of that decision. You know, we've heard both perspectives here tonight. On the one hand, is it too soon for a Bat Lane? On the other hand, you know, go big or go home. I mean, we need, as a region, to decide our commitment to that level of transit service on what's proven to be one of the most significant spines of our transit system today. So, we we need we need some regional coordination, and I think Allison mentioned IT's in a great position to take us forward on that kind of thinking. And so, that to me, from a transportation standpoint, the TMP is completely supportive of and talks about facilities like the Bat Lane, but we can't make that decision alone, and we need to be talking about it together as a region. And its timing is is something we really need to get alignment on. And I think the other thing is we've, you know, Leonard's brought up grants. We did apply for a pretty sizable grant to take this study to the next step with transportation improvements along Olympia's section of the corridor. You can picture that we're missing most of the immediate frontage needs. When you look at Lacey and Thurston County, their curbs, their sidewalks, a lot of that's set not entirely, but we're missing the bulk of it. So, it's exciting to think that we could do a project that really tackles all of our frontage along Martin Way, like we're doing on phones right now, and like we want to do on some other streets like Motman. But we, you know, we we made an attempt at a federal grant to get us to 30% design, and we weren't successful. We need to think about, do we continue to go for kind of these large grants that get us to a point where we're shovel-ready to do even more infrastructure funding? Or do we kind of tackle this piecemeal kind of what we've been talking about? Do we do we do a few crossing improvements? Do we do a few infill sidewalks? So, it's a it's a tricky balance for us. And I think I'd like to say we'll continue to go for really the large-scale project, because this is a unique point in time when federal funding is available to do big things. But it does take us, it will take us several years to be ready with a project that does construction out there on that scale. So, the Bat Lane, how we strategize around bringing in federal funds for infrastructure, those are, to me, sort of the biggest transportation questions. And if I could just, since I have the mic, you know, you brought up International Boulevard, and I just kept thinking like, I want to reassure you, there is a vision for this type of corridor in our community, and we haven't fully realized it. I mean, we've seen it a little bit on, I want to have folks picture Little Rock Road to a degree. It's not an urban corridor, it's different. But the section of Little Rock Road that's slow, that has a lot of roundabouts, it feels comfortable to walk on, this is the section in Tom Water. It's not an exact example, but I don't want us to give up on that big roads don't work for us anymore. So, there is a way to mitigate volumes there by building a better network, a street network, a grid around this corridor. There's a way to mitigate the width. There's a way to mitigate the speeds. There's a way to, we as a region, say we won't build a road beyond five lanes mid-block. That's been in our regional transportation plan. But our intersections are huge, and that's where we have problems, where they're unsafe and they're not inviting. But that's where roundabouts come in. So, we have the tools to design a better street on this scale. And I think this is an excellent chance for us to do it, but we just we're challenged by the capacity to get the money, to get the things in the pipeline and get them built. So, sorry, that was a very long answer, but those are the that's the realm of the transportation decisions I think we'll be thinking about.
Thank you. Before we jump to the the land use side, I think Lisa has a follow-up about the transportation part.
More a statement that what we talked about in finance, and I want to bring it up again, sorry, Jay, about staffing for Sophie's department. And, you know, maybe we need to have a more thorough conversation about that, because it sounds like to spend money to get staffing may get us the money that we need to do this.
I think from a land use side, we have a lot of the a lot of the things that we need are already in our comprehensive plan or would be things we would address in a subarea plan. And that is one of the three high-density neighborhood overlays that we have and are planning to do a subarea plan for. But I don't think that we've specifically looked at the nodal approach before, so we'd want to take that into consideration. But I think the interaction between the public right-of-way and where it joins to the private property line and how we accommodate that transit access to those uses is going to be something that we really need to think about. We've had some great conversations across all of the jurisdictions with intercity transit, probably more so than I've had in any other place I've worked at a local government level. But I think that really we're just going to have to fine-tune some of the things we already have in our plan to be more specific to this approach that came out of the Martin Way corridor study. I also think that we also talked about the challenges. And so, some of the challenges that we have on the Olympia side is just our our parcel structure is different than they have in Lacey or in Thurston County. And so, we might need to have additional tools to help us with, you know, lock consolidations or other things like that to help facilitate the development instead of being one more barrier. So, I'm starting to think about those things, and I'm kind of thinking about how they might play into development code updates, but I don't have haven't fully thought of all of those. But there's a lot in my head around what we need to do that, Leonard.
That's that's good stuff. And just just real quick, some things that are coming really immediately to the council that answer that question, the parking reductions will be there be in front of you very soon, the multifamily tax exemption study, and I really commend to you the market study in this project, which really looks at the sections of this corridor and what is, you know, from a private market investment standpoint for development of housing specifically, there's still challenges. So, those are two tools that help with that. There are others as well. And like you said, Joyce, easing lot consolidations or that kind of thing, or even partnerships with the the what we were talking about earlier, the public investment in some of those frontage improvements, you know, all of that can be really the key to getting that private investment that can help, you know, do a lot of this as well.
So, Allison and her team have a web portal on the TRPC site that has the the market study that Leonard just referred to and a number of other supporting documents that led up to and support the plans. There's a there's a nice, easy-to-navigate place to look at public comment and and all the planning documents. How are we doing? Other other questions? Are you good for tonight? Yeah, please.
I just want to take a moment to just appreciate all of you, just as we've talked more and dug into this this topic here. You all bring such a wealth of knowledge and like very, very clear passion for this work. And I think it's it's just such an asset for our community. So, I just wanted to thank you all for that. I really appreciate the work.
Great. Well, we do appreciate so much. This is like going to a conference, but having our own people be the panelists. Ted Talk, yeah. Thank you so much for the the conversation and the presentation tonight. And we will adjourn the study session at about 7:40 so that you can get out in the daylight. And and for people who maybe we just went away, but if we're not away yet, there is no council meeting next week. We'll see you the week after.